Good evening, welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting for October 20th, 2015. We'll begin with the salute to the flag, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Mr. Brasky?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Dent?
Here.
Mr. Rocco?
The records show Mr. Rocco was due for his work, had to travel out of the state, so he's not able to be with us today, or tonight. Thank the public for coming this evening. Mr. Gray is getting our public comment sign-in sheet.
Mr. Harvey, while you're being given the sheet, prior to the meeting, the board held an executive session to discuss a litigation matter, several personnel matters, and a matter involving a collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, thank you. All right, first name on the list is Roland Kenny.
Good evening, Roland Kenny, Falls Township. I'm always asked around this time, who am I voting for? There's three board members up for election, two back for this board.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And Mr. Galloway.
Oh, okay, I see, all right. I thought you meant three, okay, sorry.
And I'm backing all three. That's all I got to say. You want to know, that's who I'm voting. I want them three back on. Him, I want where he wants to go, because you need an honest and true man, and he's it. Good luck, gentlemen, good night.
Thank you.
I gotta get to my place.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hurry up before they realize you're gone.
Mr. Mariani?
Since this is the last meeting before the election, I just want to add my sentiments why we should vote and avoid the 16% or 20% participation that we've experienced in the past. We have, haven't we, Mr. Jay?
Yes, yes, all right.
Okay, now, politics is not a game. As a matter of fact, it's an earnest business. It's about running our country and giving democracy to the people, and as Franklin says, if they can keep them. I understand that politics thrives on disagreements, but these disagreements should be real and about things that matter and not on everything that turns politics into a game. I haven't experienced that here personally when I come before the board, but when politics turns into a game, there's a corrosive consequence to that, and it's bad and it gets worse. I want the public to know that your vote is your voice, and when you vote, you're telling elected officials how you feel about issues. If you don't vote for these issues that you believe in, then others who do vote, and then you may not like what the outcome is, encouraging everyone to vote. Voting changes communities, states, national issues, and voting is your chance. Speaking to all those who may not be here tonight but are watching, that makes a difference and affects the results, and it makes a difference in your life. You've got to get out, you've got to vote. The other thing is, most people don't think about it, but children can't vote. So, your children are depending upon you to represent their voices, and we have to do it for them. When you're voting, look out for your children's future. When we voice our concern to elected officials, as I often do, if we aren't voting, we're not the kind of people that vote, our concerns probably don't matter to these officials. Voting gives you credibility, I want to stress that. When you vote, you have credibility, and your concerns become a tight priority with legislators. As Roland said, we have three people on a five supervisor board, two of them for reelection, one of them for the county. When you exercise your vote, the 16% and 20% who do vote probably represent political parties' base. That political party now, because you didn't vote, gets to appoint your representative. You didn't vote for him, he gets appointed for you. I remember Winston Churchill says the best argument against a democracy is a five-minute conversation with a voter, and a lot of times, that's correct, but you don't want to be that kind of voter. Get informed about the candidates that are there, their qualifications, their previous performance, whether you agree with it or not, and their position on important issues to you. The price of the future for you and your family is a thing called responsibility. You can make a difference, but you're going to have to vote. I'm serious as a heart attack when I say go out and vote. I've never missed an election, and I'm in my 80th year. Get out and vote, whether you agree with the candidates or you think someone else should take their place. Get out there and vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Edgar Latuma?
Yes, good evening, Edgar Latuma, Falls Township. I was away for a month, and I just come back. I just want to ask you a question about that money. We supposed to get like $950,000 for what you did if you got that money?
The open space money. Yeah, the decision we made as a board was to have our parking recs director, Mr. Andrews, contact the four organizations that do youth sports, so the Three Little Leagues and Falls Soccer, and ask them if they had ideas for ways we could spend this money that would benefit them. Falls Soccer did submit a plan to have a couple fields redone. Levittown Continental also submitted ideas to have some work done at their complex, and we also are looking to put in a fishing pier, which we've talked about before at the Falls Township Community Park. Mr. Andrews has to now take that information. Oh, and we're also doing some money for the community garden. Our environmental advisory council asked for, they need some more space, quite frankly, because the community garden is filled and there's a waiting list of people, so they want to expand it. So, Mr. Andrews now has to go and make that presentation to the county open space committee, and they will then let us know if we're approved for those projects. Now, that probably won't spend all the money that we have, but we do have an extra year. So many communities haven't spent this money that the county has extended the deadline to the end of 2016.
Yes.
So, you know, we're hopeful, that we think we have good projects that are going to benefit residents and improve a lot of open space we already have. You know, we're a community that's pretty built out, so we don't really have a lot of open space that's left to be bought, to be preserved. But, you know, after thinking about a lot of possibilities and the ideas we come up with, that's what we're looking to do with it.
All right, congratulations, that's very good. I hope they go through that.
Yeah.
And another thing I was, now is coming to do the new budget for 2016. Okay, you say maybe you want to have some money from them to upgrade some soccer fields, like you say. And I'm a soccer referee, and I go all over, referee games all over this area. And I see, I think so our park, Excite Star Soccer Club and Falls Soccer in 1998. Build soccer field is not only to cut the grass. We supposed to take care. I told you, I go to Brunswick Park, it's by the river, the new municipal park in Wormminster. It's a lot of new parks, five, six years old. I went to Dolinstown, they have a new. You don't believe how good they are. And here, I know, Mr. Harvey, you go to the fields. I don't know, it's not only cut the grass, we have to take care of the fields. Now, we need, like I'm helping coach U-14 boys over there, I go over there, but I can't practice it. And now it's getting dark. Now, falls rent, some lights for, that's good. But I don't know if you go to Monroe Park, Wormminster, they have lights. They don't have big lights like these ones we have now, because in the left side, by the grass, in the end, on the right side, we can put some lights there. I don't know how much it's going to cost. Because like I told you, if you guys don't involve in soccer, I want to invite you one day during the week after 5:00 o'clock. You're going to see how many kids are there. Forget in the weekend, Saturday and Sunday. The benefits, five, six, now I just, it's like 700 kids using the fields. You know, it's a lot of, it's good for the kids to come and play, it's better than stay in the streets. Like U-18s, U-17s, I have Sunday e-house games. It's nice to see these kids play, but this field has to be taken care of a little better. Well, I asking that. But you say now we want to have that money, it can be nice if you're going to spend it. I hope it's going to be approved.
Yeah, I hope so, too.
Another thing, it's coming the budget, see if you can do something with the Falls Township, too, if you can put some money there for the fields, okay? And same, I don't know, asking too much, but I remember I was here, like maybe, it was last June or July. You promised, you talked to Mr. Peter Gray, where I live, South Olds Boulevard, remember to paint?
And it's funny, because we found something out around the time you, because you were pretty regular at our meetings.
Yeah, yeah, I was, but I went away.
And we found out actually something that we're a little embarrassed that we didn't know this, but that area is actually Bristol Township. Well, we talked about putting in a sidewalk for part of it.
Yeah.
The way the line goes back and forth, part of it's ours, part of it's personal township's, and so putting in a sidewalk over there on that stretch is actually more difficult than it appears, because it's not ours. It's weird, the line sort of comes around and back across the road where you are, and then kind of goes back again. So, we did look at that, it was something we tried to focus on and see how we do this, how can we make this a little better, and the problem was jurisdiction. We just don't own the property. It's not ours.
Wait, between the creek after Penrion School, on the left side, coming from the school on the right side, from the creek up to Deon Square, that is false, side even false.
I know, but the line actually.
On the right side.
But part of it, like Deon Square is not false, Deon Square.
No, no, I know Deon Square, no.
Yeah, but even the other side of the intersection, like when you're making the left off of Levittown, Oxford Valley Road, making the left there, when Deon Square's on your left, that right-hand side, that's Bristol Township.
Yeah, it's Bristol, because the last house, the last house I have in my development is facing South Olds Boulevard. When they have the art classes, I don't know if you saw there.
Yeah.
All that stretch is Bristol Township. And then, you know, the right side, coming from the other side.
But I don't, yeah, I don't know how far it goes. We talked to our Public Works Director, and that was really where he said, he started looking into it and saying, we really can't do anything, and it's not ours. So, we can kind of go back and just see exactly where the line is, but that was something we kind of, we realized as we started studying it more.
And the last, and I remember you told, you say you're going to paint like a big.
A crosswalk.
A crosswalk.
Yeah, closer.
Yeah, well, that was the issue, too. It's not, that section of the road actually isn't, I think that's Bristol Township, too. I think that's what we found out. It's, that's the problem, is where the line is.
Because I know if the apartment is across from my house, it's Bristol.
Yes.
So, it's half is Bristol and half is false.
Yes, the line is crazy over there. It's a couple places where it's very simple in Falls Township, where the line is where it's not, but there's a lot of places where it's just kind of crazy. So, all right, but I mean, we'll continue to kind of just see if there's something we can do, but, you know, it's more complicated than we thought it was.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, those are the names I had. I don't think there's anybody else who wants to speak, and there's nobody on the non-resident sign-in sheet. All right, item two on our agenda is certificate of appropriateness, and this is for 65 Old Locust Avenue. This is to install a four-foot fence in the front yard, a six-foot privacy fence on the side of the property. I know the homeowner's here, and this was approved by our historic review board. I don't know if there's any questions. There's photographs here of the existing property as well as the proposed fences.
Which is replacing an existing fence?
Correct, replacing a chain-link fence that the owner said that was interesting that, you know, because I frequently, I walk past there a lot, I've always, for the past 15 years or so, or more than that, actually. And it's funny that there was always this sort of, and it looked kind of interesting, having all this ivy grow, you know, in sort of front of the house, give it some privacy, and then when the homeowner took the ivy off, realized there was actually a chain-link fence that she didn't even realize was there, how thick everything was. But it's not, it's not in good condition, and obviously, it doesn't, certainly not historic. And I know the owner wants to try and maintain a lot of the historic character and has done a lot of work on the property. So, it would be sort of, it looks like kind of a wrought iron, well, a look at least like a wrought iron fence, and then a wood fence down the side. Any comments or questions for the property owner?
No, I think it's going to be a great improvement.
No question.
Okay, all right, is there a motion then to approve the certificate appropriateness for the fences at 65 Old Locust?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you. All right, number three on our agenda, Calamar Properties LLC, preliminary and final land development. I see Mr. Hecker is here.
Gentlemen, good evening. Tom Hecker, on behalf of the applicant. With me is Heath Dumack, the principal from Dumack Engineering. Also with me this evening is Joe O'Donnell, who is the principal of Calamar Properties, and also the principal of Premium Lift, which is the business which will operate at this building once it's constructed and completed. Joe owns and operates Premium Lift, which is a business that basically repairs small equipment, forklifts, bobcats, things along those lines. Been a longtime member of Tullytown Borough Business Community, where he's been leasing property. A couple of years ago, he had the opportunity to purchase the property, which is the subject of this application before the board this evening, and subsequently moved forward with the land development plans, which are before you tonight for your consideration for both preliminary and final. And looking back, there have probably been four different submissions to get us here this evening, and looking at the engineer's review letter, I think we're in pretty good shape, and we'll get to that very shortly. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Dumack, who will give you a brief overview of the plan, the project, what it involves. So, if you will, Heath, please.
Good evening. The site itself is sandwiched between Old Bristol Pike and Old Route 13. It is a four-acre parcel that has frontage on the two primary roads, as well as a existing access easement and stub road. What we're proposing this evening is the creation of an 11,200-square-foot building to act as a repair shop, as well as office, parking, and equipment storage, and a circular drive around the perimeter of the building in order to service, to follow what Premium Lift would need to do on their day-to-day operations. We're proposing two underground storm systems here and here, they're both underground ballast pits.
The board doesn't have any questions about the plan at this time. I can advise you that we have received a copy of the proposed resolution for the board's consideration, and that incorporates the few remaining comments, engineer's review letter, and I'm happy to advise you that any outstanding items or will comply items, that'll be addressed. There are some waivers that I'll have Mr. Dumack explain to you and describe, which are also listed in the proposed resolution, and we'll go through those. The first one deals with the ordinance requirement that would ordinarily require widening of a cartway, in this case, Old Route 13. Section 19131D2, we're asking for a waiver of it. We're not impacting Old Route 13 in any way. And Heath, would you explain where that is in relation to this property?
Certainly. Old Route 13 is along the northern boundary line, approximately 1,500 to 2,000 feet to the south. It terminates, there's no access through to get on to the new Route 13. So, basically, we're at a dead, basis of a dead end adjacent to this site.
The next one, Section 19137B, dealing with the requirement, or commercial industrial parking facilities provide 15 feet of open space between the curb line of the parking area of the proposed building. Would you explain where that condition exists and why we're requesting the waiver?
Certainly. The entire perimeter around the building, we do have a loop access drive surrounding it. However, on two sides, I'll call it the north side and the south side, the proposed building has a drive-through access. So, the intent is that the vehicles to be repaired could be brought in through one side of the building and then exit through the other, basically production lines, production line type of approach, with the intent that we do have overhead doors on both sides of the building.
Next item deals with Section 19139G, which is a sidewalk requirement under the ordinance. We're asking for a waiver, I believe there are no sidewalks in that area.
Correct.
And nor do we anticipate any pedestrian traffic at all. The next item is 19162B, dealing with the provision that could require road widening and curves to be constructed. I think what Heath has already explained to you about Old 13 is applicable to this section as well. And then the last item, it's a waiver from the requirement that the plan show the location names with the streets, railroads, property lines, so on and so forth, of all properties within 200 feet of the proposed property. We've addressed this issue. It's technically a partial waiver, as we have supplied an aerial on the front sheet, so we think, and hopefully that will suffice as far as information is concerned. Other items, as I've mentioned, are will comply items, and we would ask for your favorable consideration.
Okay, thank you. Let board members have any comments or questions. Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brasky?
So, number seven, just, I'm just, so I understand, a partial waiver, what are we going to list, or what aren't we going to list?
We've provided, well, first of all, the aerial to give you the overview of everything around it, so you effectively do pick up the 200 feet, but you want to explain what information then is available, Heath?
Certainly. What we have is the site outlined. We have the two primary roads fronting on, I'll call it, the east and west side of the property, as well as the next closest access point, which is Mill Creek Road. And you're looking distance-wise, approximately 1,500 to 2,000 feet to get to Mill Creek Road from the project site.
And the problem with that requirement, as you know, to do that would effectively require you go on private property you don't control in order to obtain that information. So, we think the aerial suffices and may even provide a better picture of how this property fits in with the surrounding properties.
Thank you.
Mr. Dent?
Mr. Sullivan, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
I have none other.
Okay, a couple of things I just wanted to raise. Letter here from Mr. Dipolito, Fire March.
Yeah, we received that. Will comply. We don't have any issues with the fire marchals.
All right, and also from Remington Vernix Traffic Engineers, the one issue about providing information on the current proposed site use with any changes in anticipated vehicular traffic. So, I don't know if you provided any of that information, or what kind of traffic are we expecting here? We have employees, obviously, sort of specialty work, it sure shows up when it needs to be.
I was just going to say, in terms of employees, there are six employees that currently work at the site in Tullytown. Joe is hoping to be able to expand that by adding two or three additional employees, not a high-traffic generator.
Okay.
The only people that are going to be heading in that direction are going to be heading for that destination.
Right, or something.
That's right. It's basically a dead end. That's right.
Okay, yeah, that's all I had. All right, we're looking, Mr. Sullivan, any problems with preliminary and final, in your opinion?
No problem with that, Mr. Harvey.
All right, so we'd be looking at resolution, if I can get it back out again, 15?
27.
27, which would grant preliminary and final land development to Calamar Properties LLC on Old Route 13. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, item five is consider appointments, oh, four, I'm sorry. This is off a little bit here. The agenda says five. Change of numbers, otherwise I'm going to keep doing that. Consider appointment by resolution to appoint auditor for the 2015 financial audit. Mr. Gray?
Several weeks ago, the township requested bids for the upcoming audit. The results of the request for proposals for the 2015 audit are as follows. Major and Mastro for the year 1231, 2015, 2016, and 2017, each year $22,000. The second company that provided the request for proposal, B. Bergville and Company, first year would be $27,500 for a two-year bid. The first year would be $26,500, the second year would be $27,250, and for a three-year bid, first year $26,000, second year $26,750, and third year $27,250. Two other companies were supplied information but declined to provide a bid. Based on the bid amount, the board is asked to consider and confirm by resolution the appointment of Major and Mastro for the 2015 audit and the Falls Township's financial records for the period January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015. In addition, Ms. Rukoff from the Finance Department, Finance Director, is here for any questions you may have.
Okay, comments or questions for Ms. Rukoff or Mr. Gray?
No.
Anything?
No.
Okay. All right, so we have the recommendation of Ms. Rukoff, and Mr. Gray obviously concurs with this. Major Mastro, assuming that there's interest in retaining them for the three years, it would be Resolution 15-28, which would appoint them as the auditors for Falls Township. If there are any, no public comment? See no hands. Okay, is there a motion then to approve Resolution 1528?
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 15-28.
Second?
Okay, and just to clarify, appointing for all three years at the amount of $22,000. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, spending money, we have to do a roll call. I apologize. Sorry about that. Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, item five, is consider the proposals from Bucks County Consortium regarding the purchase of Rock Salt for 2015-16. Mr. Gray?
Yes, Joe Arneo from the Public Works Department has provided a memo regarding the Rock Salt bid for 2015-2016. Mr. Arneo has reviewed a memo from the Bucks County Consortium regarding the purchase of Rock Salt for the 2015-2016 period. Two bids were received, Morton Salt, delivery price $63.97, and Oceanport, $75.85. Both of those were delivered, price per ton. Three, four other companies did not provide a bid. Based on the information provided by the consortium, Mr. Arneo would like to recommend Morton Salt for the purchase of Rock Salt for the upcoming season.
They're in Falls Township, too, right?
Yes.
All right. Okay, comments or questions for Mr. Gray regarding the purchase of Rock Salt?
No question.
No.
Okay, any public comment? See no hands. All right, then, is there a motion to accept a proposal from Bucks County Consortium regarding the purchase of Rock Salt? And accept the bid of Morton Salt Incorporated, the amounts listed on the memorandum of September 14th, 2015?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Second?
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Okay, all right, items six, seven, and eight, it's turning into the Jim Sullivan Show. So, item six is consider proposal for T&amp;M Associates for the 2016 Falls Township Road Improvement Program. I'll let Mr. Gray introduce this, and then he'll throw it to his sidekick.
The township received a letter from Mr. Sullivan at T&amp;M dated September 30th regarding the proposal for engineering services for the 2016 Falls Township Road Improvement Program. The estimated construction cost for reconstruction is $500,000, and the mill and overlay improvement to the westbound lanes of Mill Creek is approximately $225,000. The following roadway is included in the design scope only for this proposal for full depth road reconstruction. This includes Walton Drive, approximately 2,650 linear feet of 36-foot cartway from the intersection with Elbow Lane to the intersection with Bernard Drive. The following roadway is included in the design scope of this proposal for a mill and overlay, including Mill Creek Parkway, approximately 4,850 linear feet of 22-foot wide cartway each direction. each direction from the intersection with Falls Tullytown Road to the intersection with Levittown Parkway. And the following roadways are included in the scope for this proposal for construction administration. Howley Drive, approximately 985 feet from the intersection with Hedro Drive to the intersection with Walton Drive and Mill Creek Parkway, approximately 4,850 linear feet, westbound travel lanes only from the intersection with Falls Tullytown Road to the intersection of Levittown Parkway. Total cost of the proposal provided is $334,860. The board is asked to consider this proposal at this time.
Okay, so we're doing engineering work for three roads and construction on two of them. Walton will do, the plan is to do Walton in 2017, but we'll have the engineering part of it done, so we should be able to move quickly into doing that beginning of 2017. Mr. Sullivan, comments or questions, or comments from you?
The proposal is for design of full-depth reconstruction of Walton Drive and design of the entire stretch of Mill Creek Parkway. The construction portion for next year is Howley Drive and the westbound lanes only of Mill Creek Parkway. And that's why the construction cost is $725,000 for next year's construction.
Okay. All right. Comments or questions for Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
No questions.
I'm asking, Mr. Dentz?
Yeah, is the 2015 road program done yet?
No, not yet.
What about 14?
14 and 13 together is substantially complete. Yes, sir.
That means no.
Right. That means the JDM is actively, sporadically working on the final punch list items for 2013-14.
We've been waiting in the spring they were going to do it in the fall, now it's fall heading into winter, and they're still not done, so we're going to wait till spring?
They've done some work, they have not done it all. Mr. Clark and I are having a conversation about that.
All right. Because when I drove down Bernard Drive, all the driveways that I pointed out to you that needed to be repaired-
They have not touched the driveways.
Right. But we still have some of their money, right?
Yes, we have some of their money.
All right.
We have not issued our certificate of completion, so the project is not completed this time.
And when is the next road program starting in, on Rice Drive and Hedro Woods there?
The mill and overlay was scheduled to start on or about yesterday. They have not mobilized at the site yet. They expect to be there starting this week.
And that's only going to take a few days?
That should take them a couple of weeks to do that actual mill and overlay. There's a streambank stabilization project that's going to take a little bit longer, but-
When is that starting?
Same time. They, we gave, they had their shop drawings in yesterday, we've approved them, all they need to do is order the material and put it in.
All right. And the mill and overlay should go smooth, that should be, dig up a street one day, the next day they pave it?
Yes. Yep.
And that includes the curb repairs and the-
That includes the curb repairs.
Drains that we discussed?
And the drains we discussed.
All right.
I think we're about 200 feet of lineal, 200 feet of curb that need to be reworked a little bit. Forget the exact number. We were, Mr. Midler, we're out there for a couple of hours looking at all the curb and created a list for general asphalt to repair.
Now, what are we going to do for this road program that we're considering tonight, so we don't have the same problems we've had in the past? Especially this last road program seemed to be a real, a bigger nightmare than some. I mean, they're all bad, but this one seemed to be really bad.
Well, the easy answer is we'll have a better contractor this time.
That's not an answer. Are we going to have a, we're going to bid the landscaping work separate? I mean, that makes a lot of sense, because they're not capable of doing landscaping.
We can do that.
They hire-
We can do that. It's not usually, yeah, usually it's part of the general contractor's responsibility for landscaping.
You being the general contractor?
No. General contractor is-
That's separate.
We can do that.
Because it's a disgrace the way that they leave these properties.
It certainly was this time.
And it's still, grass isn't grimming, and it's been over a year.
That's correct.
All right. I think that's something that we should consider, is bidding the landscaping work separate.
Makes a lot, makes sense to me.
And have somebody that does landscaping do it, not a general contractor.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Generally, the general contractor does hire a landscaper, but we haven't had a lot of success with that in the past year.
Yeah, but you still have to deal with the general contractor to deal with the landscaping.
Right, that's correct. We could, we could deal with the landscaper separately through the township forces, yes.
All right. That's, I'd like to see that. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Any public comment? See no hands. All right, so we're looking then to accept the proposal from T and M for the engineering work for the 2016 Falls Township Road Program, for Walton, half of Mill Creek Parkway, and also for Howley Drive, the amount of $334,860. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Okay. Item seven is consider proposal for T and M Associates for maintenance work to the Pinewood Pool. Mr. Gray?
Yes. The township also received another proposal from Mr. Sullivan at T and M Associates dated September 30th for the proposal for professional engineering services at the Pinewood Pool, repairs to the main pool. This would include meeting with contractors to review the project's scope and identify the best methods for reconstructing the pool plaster and tile work if necessary. The estimated construction cost for the repair work is approximately $160,000. Total cost of the proposal for consideration is $15,120. The board is asked to consider this item at this time.
Okay. Comments or questions for, Mr. Sullivan, want to add anything in there in terms of what, what repair work, like the detail work that needs to be done?
This is basically the exact same scope that was done with the Kitty Pool. We replastered that and removed and replaced the tile. The only thing we don't know about the big pool is whether or not the tile has to be replaced, which is why we'll meet with contractors and get several opinions as to whether that's necessary.
And that kind of work, the pool, we're trying, it was opened in, oh, '04, I guess, or?
'04.
'04. All right, so there's some minor maintenance has been done here and there as needed, but this would be really kind of going back over it again just to make sure it's, you know, a complete kind of, not remodel, but a complete sort of inspection and repair.
And a complete replaster, which will eliminate any cracks you see in the pool at this time.
Okay. All right. Comments or questions from board members? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brasky?
Mr. Sullivan, how long will this last? How long will the pool be, you know, we won't have to maybe, you know, attend to this again?
Probably about 10 years or so, that's how long the first plaster lasted.
Okay.
It could be longer. We'll get a guarantee of some kind, I'm sure it won't be beyond 10 years.
Thanks. Mr. Dentz?
That was my question.
Okay.
That's it.
Sorry. I was going to ask, in terms of work, how, what's the, what's the length of time for this kind of thing? Assuming it's something that can be done in, you know, April, it doesn't have to be warm out, you know, it's-
It's not, it's not a long drawn-out process. The tile work's a little tedious, but the actual plaster is done very quickly, and then you fill the pool, and that takes quite a while.
Right. Right. Okay.
One more thing, though, is, is filling the pool in this cost?
Water?
Yeah.
I, I think it's part of the actual construction cost. I'm not positive of that, but I think that's correct.
All right. Just hope for a real rainy spring.
Once you, once you start filling the pool, you can't stop until it's done, or the plaster will, will discolor, so it's, it's something where it's, once it starts, you just can't stop.
All right. Okay. All right. Okay, so any public comment? See one hand for public comments, or motion open for public comments?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Quick question, I have no doubt that that work has to be done, but I'm looking at a cost of $160,000 to do that. Where in the budget is the $160,000 that's going to pay for that? Because I'm looking at the budget, and I'm seeing maintenance report and repairs at about $14,000. Now, if you're going to spend $160,000 and the work has to be done, that's fine.
Well, you're looking at last year's budget. We're budgeting, we're only budgeting for the engineering part right now, so we just-
Okay, but you're looking, what are you looking at? This is part of next year's budget?
This will be, right, this, this will be figured into next year's budget. So, what we've been approving really is a lot of the engineering stuff that we can, we can do now, we have money to do it, and which means next year, we're, you know, we just budget for the actual work itself.
Okay, because I'm, I'm looking at this, and I'm, and I'm looking at the budget, and I'm saying, where did the $160 come from?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Answer my question.
Okay, motion to close public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion then to accept the proposal from T and M Associates for the work to be done on Pinewood Pool, an amount of $15,120?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Okay. Trifecta for Mr. Sullivan. Consider proposal for T and M Associates for Green Belt Drainage Improvements and Pedestrian Bridge Replacement in Vermillion Hills. Okay. Mr. Gray?
Yes. The township also received a memo from Mr. Sullivan at T and M Associates regarding this proposal as well. This project consists of the construction of an underground seepage infiltration system for the purpose of alleviating the stormwater ponding issues in the vicinity of Vermont Lane within the Green Belt. The pedestrian bridge will consist of a single-span prefabricated concrete deck that will be placed on the existing abutments, if possible, or placed on new poured-in-place concrete abutments. The new pedestrian bridge will be equipped with safety fencing and will have the same appearance as what is in place previously. Drainage improvements' cost is approximately $60,000, and the pedestrian bridge is approximately $90,000 for a total construction cost of approximately $150,000. Total cost of this proposal from T and M is $34,800. The board is asked to consider this proposal as well.
All right. Mr. Sullivan?
Most of the design work for the drainage project has been done. Some of this has a little bit of construction observation administration in for that, but most of it is for the bridge itself. We're hoping to go with the prefab structure, or just take the old one out, put the new one in. We have to evaluate the, the abutments to make sure they can handle a new bridge. We may have some permitting to do with DEP since we're crossing a stream. That's, those are basically the elements in this proposal.
Okay. And the current bridge is essentially shot, right?
It's, it's been condemned, and it's shut, nobody can use it.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anyway, we don't have any idea how old that bridge was. Is the original maybe from, from William Levitt, maybe? I don't know, but that was Mr. Galloway stomping grounds when, when he was younger, and an inch or so shorter, so I'm not sure if he remembers.
I wasn't around when Mr. Levitt was there.
I didn't say you were. I didn't say you were.
But I do know that without, to have an abutment, the ability to, to go from one side, we call them the two sections of Vermillion Hills, you, you have to walk, she said, it would be almost a half a mile around, to, to get around, so replacing the bridge is, it's important to the neighborhood there.
Yeah, okay. All right. Comments or questions for Mr. Sullivan? Any from you, Mr. Galloway?
None.
No questions.
No? Mr. Dentz? Okay. Public comment? See no hands. All right, again, this is just the engineering part of this. So, motion to approve the proposal from T and M, or, yeah, adopt proposal from T and M for Green Belt Drainage Improvement and Pedestrian Bridge Replacement for Vermillion Hills in the amount of $34,800.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Okay. Item number nine is consider stipulations to settle in Cava Properties LLC v. Bucks County Board of Assessments Appeals Tax Parcel 13-008-051-00A. We have two of these this evening. Essentially, these are properties that have asked for reappraisals of their property, because they feel they're paying too much in taxes, property taxes, and they have settled, I believe, with the school district, which is the largest taxing body. That's correct. So, if Pensbury is fine with, is not going to fight, you know, a lowering of the assessment, then obviously it doesn't make much sense for us to fight it, or the county either. So, Ms. Galloway, if you want to add anything in terms of Cava, or any summary of this other than what I said?
It's a pretty accurate summary. The Cava property is located at 394 Lincoln Highway, and the American Stores property is located at 550 West Trenton Avenue, both in Falls Township. And as you mentioned, the school district has already approved both settlements.
Okay. All right. All right, so, let's see. Comments or questions from board members? We have two items. Item nine is the Cava property. Item 10 is the American Stores LLC. Comments or questions from board members regarding either of those? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brasky?
No questions.
And the 550 West Trenton Avenue property, that's all that I can say?
It is.
And this has nothing to do with the development that's been discussed recently?
That's correct. This, if, if and when that property is redeveloped, then the, the property would need to be reassessed.
That's all.
Okay. All right. There's no public here, really much really for a public comment, so I guess we'll, we'll move on with this. All right, so, we are, I guess, what's the language? We've only did a couple of these since my time here. Are we accepting the stipulated agreement? Is that what we're doing?
You're voting to approve the stipulation to settle based on the terms set forth in the documents in front of you.
All right, wait a minute, I'm going to write that down.
Do they go together or separate?
They should be separate motions.
Separate, yeah. Approve the stipulation agreement? Correct?
Yes, based on the terms set forth in the agreement.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to approve the stipulation agreement based on terms set forth in the agreement for Cava Properties LLC?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Second. Second.
All in favor? Aye. And is there a motion to approve the stipulated agreement, stipulated agreement based on the terms set forth in the American Stores Company LLC case?
So I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, minutes for October 6th, 2015. Comments, questions, any corrections?
Excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pollan.
Okay, is there a motion in to approve the minutes as presented for October 6th, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Engineers report, back to Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Mr. Dent and I seem to have already discussed most of the highlights I would have, or lowlights as you look at them, about the 2013 road program and 2015 road program imminent start. The only other thing I might talk about is the boat ramp docks are still in. We usually take them out on or about the 15th of October, but we leave them in as weather permits. So it'll be another couple of weeks, I would think, before we take those out.
Okay.
There's still boats down there every day.
Yep.
Okay. Comments or questions for Mr. Sullivan?
No questions.
No questions.
No.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the engineers report dated October 16th, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, bill list for October 20th is in the amount of $1,852,996.90. Of that, roughly 1.9 million. Over a million, over half is payroll and health insurance. There's also, let's see, 100, almost about 120,000 that is coming from either escrow, which is money developers put up, or state funds, highway aid and crime prevention funds. And then there are a couple other items I know I highlighted in here. Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Insurance, $145,000. Let's see, what was the other one here? Pico Energy, $23,000. And I know that Mr. Gray has been working with Pico now that the project for LED lights is completed. I know we've, we're expecting, I guess, what, next month to start seeing an updated rate?
Yes, I spoke with the Pico representative approximately one week ago, and we should start seeing a change in the rates, hopefully, knock on wood, next month.
Okay, all right. Comments or questions regarding the bill list for Mr. Gray?
No.
Okay, is there a motion then to pay the bills?
Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Okay, executive session, we had one earlier today before our meeting started. Manager comment?
The township received a letter dated September 2nd, 2015, from Trash Daddy for release of remaining funds in their escrow accounts. Total amount remaining is $5,000. Board is asked to consider releasing $5,000 to Trash Daddy.
Okay, comments or questions for Mr. Gray?
No.
Okay, is there a motion in to release the escrow account to Trash Daddy, amount of $5,000?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
I'd like to make an announcement also that there will be, at the Falls Township Municipal Complex, the American Red Cross Blood Drive will be held on Friday, October 30th, from 9:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. This will be held in the public meeting room. Appointments are preferred. For an appointment, please call Jane Leffson, (215) 949-9000, extension 233, or sign up online at the redcrossblood.org site. Any questions, American Red Cross phone number 1-800-RED-CROSS. Also-
Walk-ins are welcome too?
Yes, well, yeah, you can probably stop by, but appointments are preferred.
You giving blood, Mr. Gray?
Yes, I will be giving.
He orders doughnuts afterwards and orange juice.
I will definitely be giving blood, yes.
I don't know about the orange juice, that has fruit in it, I don't think, I don't think he, he doesn't touch that, that's dangerous for you.
Find out if it's going to be Band-Aids or if it's going to be cotton balls and tape and let me know.
Yes, I will, I will, absolutely. Also, any tow operators desiring to be licensed in the township must file an application on or before November 30th. The application is on file with the township manager, manager's office, or online at www.fallstp.com. And that's all I have.
Number 30?
They have to come into the township.
And they do have to come into the township building to-
November 30th, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, all right, board comment? Mr. Dent?
I have no comment tonight.
Mr. Brasky?
No comment.
Mr. Galloway?
Just add, as everyone spoke of in the opening, public comment, Tuesday, November 3rd is very important, it's our election day. More than, more important than who you're going to vote for, it is just the fact that you do vote and participate in our democracy, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Couple things, I want to just acknowledge, the American Legion, the board supervisor's got a letter of thanks from the American Legion for the help we gave them in repairing their parking lot this summer, so I want to thank them, the commander, Ron Duckenfield, as well as the vice commander, Robert Tracy, for, for the letter they sent us, we very much appreciate that, it's our pleasure to help them. Also want to acknowledge the mistake in our Falls Township newsletter, which went out just a few weeks ago. I didn't pick it up, and it's funny because all of us sort of read through it and didn't sort of pick up the mistake, but a resident on Vine Lane in Levittown picked up a mistake and she sent a letter to, to me, just asking me to, you know, kind of be careful of it in the future, spelling mistake, misspelling the word Vermillion, in terms of, one of the articles talked about the sidewalk program on New Falls Road, and going from Vermillion Hills up to where Pensbury High School is, and there's an extra L in Vermillion in our newsletter, and actually, it was funny because Mr. Dent and I noticed at the same time, it was actually on our, on item number eight in our agenda, there's an extra L on there too. So we'll have to send Mr. Gray to, to spelling class, maybe.
He's not a member of the board.
Right, right. So I want to thank the, the resident for her letter and pointing that out to us, apologize for the mistake. We try to, and especially myself being a teacher and the, the person that we have who, who does a lot of our press force knows that I'm, I'm picking up that stuff, and I usually get my red pen out when I'm looking at stuff, just, it's, it's just a habit, it's 20, 20 something years, it's hard to break, of correcting that kind of stuff, so I, I usually pick that stuff up and I didn't, so, you know, I apologize for that myself. The November meeting, first meeting in November is on election day, it's, you know, that's usually what happens, we have it on the first Tuesday of the month, and the first Tuesday is almost always election day. We are going to change that meeting, and I know board members, I think we talked about doing it on the day before, okay, so that's okay, if that's staff and professionals, I guess that's all right, we've, we had a little bit of discussion between us. All right, so we'll move the meeting, our first meeting in November will be November 2nd, which is the first Monday, so, and Halloween is obviously on Saturday, so I know people always kind of look forward to that because they don't have to sort of rush home from work, rush home from school, you know, get the kids ready, then go out. And just want to wish everybody a very happy, very safe Halloween. The big concern I always have, you know, not buying into sort of all the panic and hysteria you see in the media about, about, be careful of the people that are around you, I really worry more about traffic. Obviously getting dark earlier, kids dressed in all kinds of costumes, often costumes that are darker in color, and not even just little kids, toddlers and elementary school kids, even high school kids that are going out with their friends and trick or treating, just be careful if you're driving that night, go extra slow. We know that speeding is often an issue here in the township, it's in pretty much every township, speeding is an issue, but just be careful that night, and also for the people going out trick or treating, be careful. Obviously, drivers have a responsibility to be cautious on the road, but you have a responsibility too, to cross roads safely if you're going to cross the roads. And I hope everybody has fun, hopefully the weather's good, and everybody has a good, good time trick or treating, and they have the next day to sort of come down off that sugar high they're going to be on Saturday night. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.